Section 7, Part 8. Approval of the January 9th, 2018 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes. Since I've read half of them already.
I've read through all of them and found no errors. I move to approve.
Motion to approve. Add a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Item B. Report from the Schuler Restoration on Digital Film Project. Mr. Donati.
Mayor Mans Commission, City Manager Barry. Good evening. My name's Bill Donati. Schuler Restoration Commission Incorporated. It was a conversation about five years ago with Kerry Medina about movies and scheduling at El Raton. And Kerry made the comment that they were having trouble competing with the multiplexes in getting first-run movies because they only had one screen. And so the thought was born that, well, maybe we could have another screen. So numbers is the bottom line, of course. We made inquiries and Mark Roper, a former Raton resident, New Mexico Economic Development, he works with them now, he suggested that we apply for a LIDA grant, a local funds grant. They, the state, had been giving a hundred thousands of dollars, or a hundred thousand, to each of eight theaters, I do believe, up to that time, the Luna and Clayton being one of them. So with many meetings under our belts, City Manager Barry along with Kerry Medina, Neil Emero, and Dave Little with Alpha Graphics, and Brenda Ferry and Diane Sanchez with Raton Main Street, a request was made to the city, or to the state. And then April 20th, 2015, Cabinet Secretary John Borella came with much fanfare to the Schuler Theater and came personally and awarded us $100,000 in LIDA money for the city of Raton to install digital cinema at the Schuler. Well, little did we realize that with the best intentions, of course, it would take over two and a half years before we saw our first movie, but that's, you know, good things take time, especially with government. So the first show, Blade Runner 2049, that was October the 26th. Since then, we had the world premiere of Thor on November 3rd, and a nice reception, attended by many. Justice League, Only the Brave, Coco Jumanji, Wonder, Star Wars, Ferdinand, The Greatest Showman showing now. So truly first-run, first-class movies at the Schuler with the help of El Raton. We entered into a memorandum of agreement with the El Raton Productions Company, and that's what I handed out to you. It's a one-page memorandum of understanding. And I'll just briefly go over just a few of the highlights. We are to give notice for their scheduling, and if any conflicts come up, they'd like at least two days' notice. I want to say that they've been very, very accommodating because the Schuler Theater is a live theater. I think that is our first preference, and El Raton went in knowing that. And so with the live shows, they've been able to schedule around that and have brought in some, as I said, great shows. Large maintenance items such as a projector or server failure will be the responsibility of the city and/or the Schuler for repair. They will assist where possible, but the equipment doesn't belong to El Raton, so they cannot pay for the parts or for the entire failed unit. Number three, under Schuler Restoration responsibilities, keys provided to the theater management for access to the building, and we did make some copies. Kerry had those made, and they are at their managers', in their possession. Schuler Restoration will assist in limiting access to the equipment. That just makes sense. We don't want anyone fooling around that doesn't know what they're doing, me included. El Raton Productions Company, scheduling of movies and personnel required to operate them, booking of all movies to be shown, includes the administration of box office reporting and payment of box office royalties, operation and maintain of concessions to be utilized at the theater, concessions and tickets sold out of El Raton, and patrons then walk to the adjacent Schuler Theater for the show. Beverages will be sold in bottle form with the cap on them at the Schuler. Of course, that was a major consideration when we first started because there was no food or drink allowed in the Schuler for decades. The precedent had been set. So we were very concerned, but I must say that the messes had been few. And if there are any, they clean them up very quickly. The El Raton crew does. So I don't foresee that as a problem. Popcorn, you know, that blows away. It's no problem. Large pieces of trash, okay. And then we do have our regular cleaning crew in the Schuler for a more thorough cleaning. The negotiated price is $1 per patron to the city or Schuler per show, and they will pay this semi-annually. Regular maintenance of the digital equipment and sound system, so they currently have a technician come in every six to 12 months, and the technician also will take care of the same equipment at the Schuler and the interconnecting computer network. El Raton will share these costs with the city and with the Schuler, splitting travel costs for both organizations. Thus far, we've needed no maintenance or there have been no breakdowns. A few minor glitches, but nothing, nothing major. And any unscheduled emergency maintenance coordinated by El Raton, any costs associated with technician, parts, rental, whatever, will be the responsibility of the city and Schuler. And so it's a one-page memorandum. We tried to keep it simple, and we are operating under that right now at this particular point. Any questions on that? From the beginning, the purpose of this was to help one of our local businesses, El Raton, and the Camp and the Medina and the Emerel families, who 10 years ago made the commitment to our city to save the El Raton, one of our downtown landmarks. So Kerry Medina is here with us this evening. Kerry, you were reporting that attendance in the Schuler. Do you have those numbers? You want me to?
Yeah.
Come on up.
So from, I think Billy's wrong on the date of 10/26. I have from 10/20 to 118. 10/20/17 to 118/18, at the Schuler, there were 708 patrons. And that was even with a week and some downtime where we couldn't show for like the Trial of Ebenezer, and then there was a couple other, you know, weekend nights that we couldn't show. So there were 708 patrons compared to El Raton that had 1,052. So that represented 40% of the booth that we were taking in. Now whether that was a 40% increase, it's kind of hard to say because whether people would have held off to go to another, you know, at another time, or gone to the other single movie that we had, it's kind of hard to say, but I would say it's probably pretty close to a 40% increase that we had at that time. I'd say anywhere between 30 and 40%. So it's a significant number, and it seems to be working out very, very well.
El Raton, we had a meeting of Schuler Restoration Commission this past month. Ted Kemp was there too also, said that you had also added some staff?
Yeah. We added a couple of personnel in the plus or putting in more time because they have to be there longer. So there has been an increase on our payroll.
Okay. And one of the requirements of the grant was that it would cause an economic development of, I think we were very conservative in what we told our state, maybe one?
Yes, correct.
So we doubled our projections.
Well, and it's just tapping the surface now too. I mean, there's a lot of different elements we could go now, if we could look into, you know, the theater or the projector at the Schuler is digitally equipped, so we could play DVDs on it. You know, if we could do some sort of film festival now, you know, maybe look at getting up Ted Turner, doing a silent movie festival or something.
That'd be great.
So I, it's opened other avenues. We're looking at doing something different with our concession, where we could be open more hours, have more drive-in, other than just the movies. I'm actively seeking a microbrewer to possibly partner with us, so that may be sort of beer and wine. But it's opened a lot of doors, and hopefully we'll have some more stuff to report next year.
Nice.
I think it's a great partnership.
Yeah.
Well, we do too. And one more of our partners, and that's Tim Bird and M.K. Electric, we needed to mention. He helped Sonic with the installation of the equipment. And Tim, last night at the show at the Schuler, which, by the way, if you missed it, you missed Rock'em, Sock'em, They Rocked Our World kind of show. But Tim said that the final pieces of equipment, that for audio impaired patrons, we have a couple of headsets now, and then also for readers that will digitally explain the movie and also the dialogue, you can read it right as the show is going on. So yeah, we want to be compliant with that too. That's my report. If you have any questions.
I know it was extra work for everybody involved, and I know my family appreciates it a great deal. Thank you for doing it.
Absolutely. I think it's a great partnership, and it's, and I've been to three movies now at the Schuler and enjoyed it immensely.
And what, Rita Schulman Thursday, and Hostiles begins?
And Hostiles begins Friday. We're down to one movie instead of double booking, movie double book all of them weekend. But the Schuler's coming up with quite a bit of stuff here in February. And plus, it's a bad time for Hollywood. They don't really put out a whole lot this time. So it works well.
Cool. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C. Presentation of City of Raton Strategic Plan by Retha Shiplet and City Department Heads. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Procham, Mayor, City Commission. I am pleased to submit to the City Commission the 2018 City of Raton Strategic Action Plan. You'll should have a copy of that on your desk. That is not on my desk. We did a lot of work on that today. And it is, this action plan is the culmination of quite a bit of work throughout the year 2017. You all will recall that we had a strategic planning session at the Convention Center on March 17th of 2017. And so some time has gone by since we had talked about action plan, strategic planning in general. And in the reports, you see a list of participants at that March 17th strategic planning session. The list is more than 30 people. It's too extensive to name everyone, but at that, we had, of course, the City Commission. We had a lot of city staff representing every one of our departments. We had the utilities, Raton Water Works and Raton Public Service Company. Plus, we had all of our strategic partners were present for that. Raton Housing Authority also, I don't want to leave them out. So we had a large group, really look at the community, put a lot of effort into it. That was an all-day planning session. We have since taken that information and talked about it many times at the department head level. So what I would like to just give you a brief overview of what we contain in the action plan, and I would tell you that the action plan will be put on our website. We'll have copies available here at City Hall, plus at the library. I think the electronic version is probably the easiest for the public to look at, but we would encourage the public to try to review the plan, see what the city has been working on. And so in the plan, we have a statement of our vision, and I'll just give that to the Commission. We're not going to read through the entire plan, but I do have all of my department heads present here tonight. Would like to make a brief presentation to the Commission, so we thank you for your time on this. But our vision is to encourage a thriving business economy, ensure neighborhoods are safe and beautiful, recreation and educational opportunities are exceptional, all while preserving the city's rich history. So those are elements that we have derived out of our planning activities and the work that we've done during 2017. We also state our mission. So our mission is operational excellence exceeding customer expectations. In the action plan, we identify our key customer groups, we identify our key stakeholder groups, and we identify seven primary focus areas. So if I could give you just a brief look at our seven primary focus areas, number one is strong and effective strategic partnerships. And strategic partnerships are so important to the city of Raton. Just for example, and this is out of many partnerships that we have established over the last several years, but our Crime Stoppers group and the Raton Police Department is a very effective group, has made a significant difference in town, and we like to point to that partnership, as well as partnership with Raton Main Street. It's been very effective. We've seen improvements result from that on First Street. We've seen a better business environment, and there are many partnerships in there. So the document talks about those, talks about the importance of those. A key focus area for us is youth development, entrepreneurship, and new generation. And there, we've identified that we lose some of our talent here in town. We send the young people off to get an education or a job, and it's tough getting them back. And so we're really looking at methods that we can try to utilize that talent here in town. Entrepreneurship, I think there are, this is a good opportunistic time for the entrepreneur. We've gone from a time when we had primarily mom-and-pop businesses in town to a time where we've seen a lot of those go and the national retailers come in. We'll talk about the state of national retailers, but I think the change in the business environment kind of opens opportunity for entrepreneurs, again, maybe some more of those mom-and-pop businesses, and so that's a part of our plan. The third metric here is family-friendly community, and we want to be that community that people really want to live in, they want to do business here, they want to become a part of. Our fourth item here is enhance economic vitality with innovative approaches. And so I think it's anticipated that the city of Raton will participate in economic development, will contribute towards those factors that create economic vitality, but it takes innovation. It's a, it's a competitive, difficult world out there. We have to think outside of the box, the routine methods, so we reflect that in the action plan. Five, ensure vital resources, safe and attractive neighborhoods. So there, we would like to take proactive measures to enhance Raton's appearance, maintain its vital public works and its infrastructure. Preservation of our natural resources, develop capabilities for high-speed broadband services would be one of those things that is required going into the outlook for new economy. We want to support economic vitality, the quality of life, and high-quality government operations. Six on our list is position the city for the future. I think that one of the important things for the future is our water resources, and this where we have worked, spent a lot of time working with Raton Water Works. Raton is positioned well for the future as far as a resource there. There are many other elements that you see on the plan, but some New Mexico communities really are not primed for growth or even maintenance because that's a resource that they are not sure how they're going to support their community with. Raton, on the other hand, has done a good job of planning, the people that have come before us, and we want to maintain that forward-looking vision. And then finally, we have operational excellence, and we talk about this a lot at City of Raton. We really want to have people who know what their objectives are, where their goals are, where their focus is, and be enthusiastic about that, and be, achieve a measure of excellence in all of our operations. So those are the focus areas that we have identified. There's a lot of information here to digest, and we will get that out to the public. I do want to point out that the city has worked with Retha Shiplet since the beginning of the process. Retha is, like any good team, you have to have a good coach. And we've got a great coach here in Retha, and I want to thank Retha for all of her effort, all of her work, her guidance on this, her professionalism, has really brought this effort together. But I would like to call on Retha as well to maybe come forward and tell us a little bit about the process and the plan that we've got.
Thank you very much, Scott. My Commissioners, Mayor, I'm very privileged to be here tonight, and I'm very privileged to have worked with such a great team and all of you when we started the strategic planning session. So as a result of the strategic planning session that we did in March of 2017, the department leads, under Scott's leadership, have done a lot of work to determine what their departments want to accomplish, present and future, for the great city of Raton. In addition to what they came up with, you all did at the planning session in March, and then also many emails that we've had, many meetings that we have had, and the visions and the dreams that each department lead has, where they want to take their department. But it starts at a very high level, as you know. It starts with senior leaders. You have to have a vision. If you're going to be an organization of excellence, you have to have a vision. Where are we going? And what do we want to be known as in the future? And that is Scott presented in the very beginning. That vision came about as a result of the strategy session in March and the subsequent meetings, followed by admission. What does every department and every staff person want to accomplish on a daily basis? And that is operational excellence. So when our staff knows where we want to go in the future, it's good that you have those because you cannot achieve performance excellence if you don't know where you're going and what you want to accomplish on a daily basis. And in the plan, and there are the operational excellence, there is an acknowledgement, and it just goes to what I said about focus areas. And the plan was also developed from benchmarking other cities around our nation that are known to be on the performance excellence journey. So with that incorporated, the focus areas kind of came from there as well, but each department has talked about that a lot. So with that, each of the departments are going to come up and give you a very quick overview of their strategic objectives, a little bit about where they're really going to start, and then also every department now has a motto. And I know that you know everyone, but I just like to formally present to them. For the Fire Department, we'll be Acting Chief Chris Espinoza, who first. At the Library, he's represented by Director Thaler Wright. Parks and Recreation, represented by Director Jared Chatterley. The Police Department, represented by Chief John Garcia. Planning Department, represented by City Manager Scott Barry. Public Works and Solid Ways, represented by Director Jason Phillips. And the City Clerk, represented by Acting Clerk Michael Ann Antinucci. And Treasurer, will be represented by the Treasurer, Michael Ann Antinucci. So first up, Chris.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, just like to present you with our department motto. Our department motto is preserve life and property. Some of our strategic goals are increase fire department operational efficiency. Some of the things that we need to do to get that done is we need to buy newer vehicles, increase that efficiency to meet our 911 calls, to make, to get those calls quicker, make sure that we have better responses. Enhance emergency responses, so maintain effective response and force in handling the fire and medical in emergency calls. Our second plan is to enhance workforce capabilities and knowledge. We can maintain high efficiency by training all of our guys to a higher levels, higher level of care, and therefore the patients and everybody else benefits from the higher level of care. Our third objective is to promote workforce safety and wellness. So if our guys are very fit and they're up to doing the job, our job performance becomes a lot better. Our fourth one is protect and preserve medical injuries and making lower risks. We want to educate the community and the public about larger incidents and how we can prevent some of that stuff. And I do have a fifth one that is going to be talked about at a later section. Do you guys have any questions?
No, sounds really well put together.
Chief, you have from the library, Ms. Thaler and Ms. Aranhand, as you talk about strategic objectives for the library.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The library motto is gateway to the heart. And as you know, we all have a certain strategic objective and many subheadings under that. I can't discuss all of them, but if there's anything that you see in the future that you want to talk about, certainly available. Our first strategic objective is to increase library operational efficiency. We want to, among other things, maintain the city library facilities and grounds so that visitors, employees, and volunteers can enjoy safe, functional, and accommodating facilities. Another important part under efficiency is for me to identify systems to enhance premises' safety. That safety also includes safety training for staff and volunteers and new written guidelines that are up to date and expanded. We want to increase the collection efficiency, and we continually do that. We have projects going on, but a couple of new ones will be upgrade the file material collection and digitize the microfilm for online access by local and nationwide users. Our strategic objective number two overall is enhance library workforce capabilities and knowledge. I want to make sure everyone is trained on applicable department processes, new and updated, such things as new online catalog, our new Koha check-in checkout system, using eBooks, helping patrons use eBooks, use of new equipment, our new television, a new video gaming system. I want to increase workforce and volunteer communications, flow of information empowerment by employees, even volunteers, and accountability for performance. Strategic objective overall, objective number three is increase library events for all customer groups. Because we have a small staff, we are looking to schedule programs and classes from independent sources outside the library. We've already begun this. We want to develop policies, procedures, and promotional guidelines for that new video gaming system, and when that's done, we can get it up and running, get it advertised and so on. Overall objective number four is proactive approaches to engage partners for the library. We already have many partners, but this year, we're going to be engaging also with Jeff Peterson from the Centers for Sustainable Community to assist in adult computer classes. We would look to hold them not only in the library, but also at the Center for Sustainable Community. And they will provide staff to support a new program we will be implementing in libraries as sponsored. as sponsorships. That program is to develop entrepreneurship in Raton. We also have one other program that's viewed that we are going to be partnering with and not taking necessarily the lead, to establish a program where people who want to submit their taxes online but have never done it, cannot use a computer, don't know how it works, will be able to do so in this community, and it will be a free service.
Cool.
So, like I said, if you have any questions in the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We've got Jared Chatterley representing our recreation, Parks and Recreation programs.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, it's a pleasure to have an opportunity to address you today. So, our...we have three strategic objectives, and you all are educated folks, we don't necessarily go through all of them, but if you'll notice, they tie to the overall mission of the Parks and Rec Department, which is to have well-built, well-maintained recreation facilities, to provide and promote family-oriented recreation programs and events, and to have a well-trained, customer-service-oriented staff. So, as you go through, you'll notice our strategic objectives all point towards our mission, which in turn points towards the city's mission and vision of all those different things that Mr. Berry had mentioned there, and which then points to our motto, which is encourage whether it be residents, visitors, tourists, to stay and play. That's the motto of the Parks and Rec Department, is to encourage folks to stay and play. So, unless you have any questions about any specific objective, I'll turn the time over. I think Jason is next, and he will have all sorts of things to chat about. Thank you very much.
You're actually going to go to the police department and chief or city?
Mayor and Commissioner, City Manager, just remind you that the police department's motto is to protect and serve, which is extremely important in our city mission. Our strategic objective number one is to increase police department operational efficiency. That's extremely important, as we noticed just this last week, how important it is to maintain an efficient manual mobile communication center. I am glad to say that we've hit the ground running with that in 2018. We have brand-new consoles coming in, getting ready to get set up at the end of this month. Carol is shorting up funding from DFA for new 911 equipment, which should be up and running hopefully by the end of this year. Another goal is to enhance city's capabilities to prepare for, respond to, and recover from disasters, which includes us and fire, as well as our newly implemented school resource officer. Getting the schools on board is extremely important, and their safety is important. Our strategic objective number two is enhance workforce capabilities and knowledge, to provide training specific to leadership, management, supervisory workforce, and for potential staff to these positions, succession, planning, and leadership. Having my younger supervisors trained and educated on how to handle situations that we are already handling, and have them prepared to help the city here in the future. Strategic objective number three is to promote workforce safety, which is extremely important, wellness and fitness. Although my men is extremely important, we are tested once a year every year to make sure my guys are maintaining shape and not eating too many doughnuts. Have maintained our personal protective equipment, which is extremely important with the dangers that my men face every day, making sure they have the equipment needed to protect themselves further out. Strategic objective number four is proactive approaches to prevent city incidents within the city as city employees, and to lower our risk, to promote and improve safety prevention through education, increase public and business awareness, and to get a reduction in injuries throughout the city. Strategic objective number five is proactive approaches to a safe community, improving motorist safety with research and action, and ensuring cases are promptly and thoroughly investigated, so there are no issues with the district attorney's office and the cases are prosecuted properly.
Very good. I'm going to actually present to you the next section. This section is dealing with planning in the city, and the planning effort is an interdepartmental effort between the city manager, fire and emergency management departments. That includes the zoning official and the code enforcement officer for the city of Raton, and we have come up with a motto of innovative, ethical, and effective. And our emphasis is a direct result of overwhelming feedback that I hear a lot of, we get throughout town, we hear from all corners, and that really is improving the appearance of Raton, cleaning up Raton. And I think in order to effectively grow, to effectively implement economic development measures, to improve any part of our city, improvement of appearance is an important metric. So, we have established two strategic objectives, and the first would be affirmative action on private property. The second would be affirmative actions on publicly owned properties. And we have laid out a number of strategies. A lot of these strategies will be new for Raton. Other communities are going through some similar efforts. We've looked at some of these that are effective or tried by other communities, but we will come to the commission throughout 2018 and propose some of these strategies. So, there, we have some strategies for dealing with dilapidated structures, abandoned properties, vacant buildings that are privately owned. We would hope to incentivize property owners, so you may see kind of a carrot and a stick approach as far as improving and cleaning up these properties. We want to engage our partners in communicating and assisting us in a city beautification plan and a revitalization plan, and as we stated, those partners are so important really for so many of our initiatives. And then we've also listed strategies that lie with those publicly owned buildings. So, these are very important initiatives, I think, for the city of Raton in 2018 certainly, and beyond that point, and there'll be some new things in there, so we'll spend a lot of time talking about this as we all want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, I think just to be different, I'll hold my motto till a little later in the presentation segment. We as well in Public Works and Solid Waste, strategic objectives for our department, as you can see without going through the many steps that each one entails, increasing solid waste and public works operational efficiency is our number one objective. Our objective number two, which ties in with Mr. Berry's planning goal, is citywide beautification. And our third objective is modernization and new development of city facilities. So, in our department, our motto that we've chosen is back to beautiful. I hear it often, people ask, you know, why Raton doesn't look the way it used to? And there's a number of reasons for that, but in order to get there, you have to take steps. And long before this plan was formalized, we had a plan before that, shockingly enough. So, in our department, part of the plan is capital investment to reduce operating expenses. That's what efficiency truly means. You repave a road, you don't have to patch potholes on it, takes less people to do it, which coincidentally, you know, part of why Raton used to be so beautiful is that we used to have a staff that was about double the staff that we currently support. So, with efficiency, you gain the ability to return this to a beautiful city. Mr. B. Hill and myself, as we co-managed these departments in the past, had to make concessions of beautification in order to repair our streets, because it doesn't do a lot of good to increase the beauty when you're spending all your time docking potholes to drive through those streets. Aspiring to Raton to make beautiful again requires an increase in efficiency, because there is no expectation in this department that we will step up to that level. We're going to have to do the best we have with what we've got, and part of that is improving facilities. The transfer station is the key to increasing efficiency, as of all of our goals, which are modernizing facilities, replacing equipment. The transfer station allows us to use less employees to do more operation, which frees street department personnel to work on beautification projects. Doing our part goes hand in hand with anticipating and expecting citizens to do their part by reducing illegal dumping and exhibiting civic pride. Part of that is that we're willing to be a strategic partner. We'd love to make Raton beautiful for my children, our parents, all of the citizens. It requires public buy-in, that we'll go the extra mile to help pick anything up, but we would expect a little of the same consideration in return. That's how we can be more efficient. And we reach out the olive branch by having solid waste facilities that are essentially free to use for city citizens. If you go to the transfer station rather than the alley, that's doing your part, and that helps make Raton beautiful for everyone. A lot of our goals aim at training and retention of staff, and I think in developing a workforce, without mentioning, you know, people by name, in our department, we generally hire temporary employees. They come through the door, a lot of times in the past, they pick up aircraft. But we've had folks that have walked through the door as a temporary employee, found a place that they like to work with a skill set that we'd like for them to have, advance all the way up to some of the upper echelons of management in our department, and building employees that have investment in our department works out better for us to be able to put them off the street. So, we've taken, you know, the first steps towards implementing this plan. We have many goals of modernization and safety improvement that we'd like to engage in the future, but, you know, we think we're on the right track, and, you know, we're excited to know that somewhere in 2018, we'll have our transfer station open, and that will free up time to help make this place beautiful once again. I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Mayor of town, you give town a two for here, this is Montalena, and he's going to talk about issues relating to city clerk and treasurer.
All right. Mayor and City Commissioner, it's my pleasure to present to you this evening for the office of the city clerk as the acting city clerk and also as your current treasurer. You will see in the plan for the city clerk's office, our motto for the clerk is preserving the past, present, and future. And so, the mission of the clerk's office is to accurately record and preserve the records entrusted to the clerk and to provide excellent service to the public. And so, you will see under our plan, we have three strategic objectives in the city clerk's office, and so, number one is to increase our operational efficiency. And so, some of the ways that we can do that, we are looking at purchasing some equipment and making some upgrades also to the commission chambers, because we want to, you know, ensure that we can accommodate the public and that we have adequate systems, especially if we have large groups in the room. It's important that people can understand whether they're participating via phone. We do have some upgrades that probably need to be made to our sound system, so as we proceed with this year's budget, we'll look at some of the upgrades and things that we can make, not only to the commission chambers, but the clerk's office as well. We possibly will be looking at moving forward, continuing with the records management system that was implemented a few years ago, and just really ensuring the preservation of the records that are entrusted in our office, and making those readily available to the public, so that we can retrieve them quickly and we're not having to dig through boxes. We also want to ensure and promote workforce and customer safety, and so we really want to focus on staff training, and that's something that we can work on with the police and fire department, and ensure that my staff here in our building has adequate training to identify unsafe conditions, no signs of danger, and what certain protocols will be, because we do deal with some volatile situations, and I'm not quite sure that we're always prepared on how to deal with those situations. So, under our strategic objective number two, we want to focus on our workforce capabilities and knowledge, and so I'm very excited. Our department has gone through a reorganization of staff recently, and so I'm excited about the changes and the new direction that we're going with our staff, and we're focusing on staff training and cross-training, and that's to ensure continuity and to provide that excellent customer service to the public. And so, you know, some of the ways that we'll do that, especially through the cross-training, we've appointed a deputy clerk, and so we want to focus on them getting the necessary training that they need that's offered through the New Mexico Municipal League to become certified and have adequate training, once again, to provide that excellent service to the public and be competent in the services that we provide. So, under our strategic objective number three, approaches to city clerk services, as you know, I mean, it's mandatory that we provide the meeting minutes, the agendas, all of that in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, and so we will continue to meet those mandatory deadlines, and also the new city staff will be trained to do that as well, to be my backup. But more importantly, we are the repository of the city commission actions, including the related documents for public viewing, and so once again, we're going to focus on the record storage. We need to identify an onsite facility area for record storage, and focus on records retention, and really follow the state's schedules so that we can, once again, organize everything, be able to retrieve it, and continue with the scanning and archiving of the digital records. One of the areas that we want to make some improvements is city elections, and we have one coming up here in about a month. Most of these changes won't go into effect for this election, but by 2020, we would like to establish voter convenience centers for the municipal elections, and that could increase voter turnout and the convenience for the voters, where they could vote at these convenience centers regardless of which precinct they reside in. And then, once again, our staff will continue with election training to ensure that we can run the elections properly. So, if we move over to the treasury strategic action plan, the motto for treasury is to ensure public trust, and our mission is to deliver exceptional financial management of city resources and taxpayer dollars accurately, efficiently, and transparently. And so, this is something that I take very seriously, and it is my fiduciary responsibility as the treasurer of the city of Raton. So, the vision is that the city of Raton will be fiscally responsible to meet the needs of our community and provide quality service once again. And so, you'll see under our strategic objectives, once again, we will focus on some equipment upgrades. Our computers are fairly old in our office, and we need to probably look at some upgrades to our server, and once again, just preserving the multitude of records that our office handles. Also, a lot of this is a crossover with the city clerk as far as promoting workforce safety and our customer safety, and also you will see under, I guess some of this is a little bit redundant, focusing on staff training. A lot of our staff will be cross-trained in clerk functions and treasury functions. Under strategic objective number three, engaging partners for our department, one of the partners that we seek to engage, and not just my department, but all city staff, would be to engage with the library staff. We are working on a new newsletter for the city, and so we really want to increase public awareness of city government news, and so that's a goal of ours, and we are moving forward with that, and should have the first newsletter hopefully out within the month.
Nice.
That's one of our immediate goals. That's one of our immediate goals. And then we also want to engage our media sources with the radio and newspapers, because they are a very important partner to get the information and share the news with the public. And then our strategic objective number four, ethical and transparent management of city finances. We do want to continually strive to be transparent and make sure that the public has easy access to the information that they request, and we also want to, we're continually reviewing our internal processes to ensure proper segregation of duties and always safeguarding the city assets, and so we want to eliminate any risk or potential for fraud and theft. And we strive for zero internal control deficiencies in our audit reports. So, and I think one of the things that we talked about was designing and developing a business survey that we can mail out annually with our business license renewals, and I think this would help us increase satisfaction ratings of our customer service and identify the business needs in our community through that feedback. So that's something that we would work on later in the fiscal year when we do our business license renewals. And then lastly, just department accountability for city assets and budgets. We will be doing our annual fiscal inventory again this year in April, and so that's something that we contract with an outside firm to do, but it's very important, not only for the audit, but once again, to safeguard our city assets. And so, you know, our department heads play a role in this as well, and we all work very closely together, but we review the budget and our financial reports and just ensure that regular communications with the staff to monitor the spending and once again, be fiscally responsible. And that's all I have for you. Is there any questions?
Good work.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro-Tim, Commissioner, the action plan, as you've heard, the strategic objectives, that's really a high-level view of the plan. The plan does go on to name many goals. Of course, we've named the champion or the co-owners of the achievement of those goals and the timetable, so it's not the end of a process here, it's really the beginning of a process. We'll make those goals, and the champion of that goal, the timeframe, and we'll keep the commission posted on the efforts to achieve those goals, the outcomes, and we are talking about the measures of success in the plan. Now, the plan again is to really communicate Really communicate the
Mayor, are you still there?
The, he's getting a lot of feedback. The efforts of the city to the public is a big goal of the plan. As we say in the resolution, it really is to establish that sense of purpose for city staff, but also you all, the commission, the elected officials, as policymakers, we have tried to take your input, incorporate that into the plan, and then going forward, it really is an effort to implement your policy and your direction to us. So we are asking the commission to endorse the plan as we presented to you, knowing that this is a working document, a living document, and we'll be back to talk about this frequently. And so our next item is a resolution where the commission would consider adoption of the action plan. Again, I want to thank the department heads. They've put a lot of work on it, they really have been enthusiastic about developing this, and we know that this is something that we live by going forward. Also, again, Rita, thank you for all of your efforts. Really essential, as we said, to have a good coach, knowledgeable coach in this department. That's all I have.
Thank you. I applaud everybody's effort in this, and it has some very good points in it, good planning, strategies set forth, and I look forward to implementing these and seeing the results. Any other comments?
I know you all worked hard on it and quickly, which is very appreciated, how much effort you put in it, and these plans are not that easy to accomplish, so.
Mance.
Very good.
Are you back, Sandy? We lost you there for a minute.
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we're moving on to the deliberating part and acting on the adoption of the Raton strategic plan. That's where we're at.
Okay.
Did you have any questions or comments for Scott or anybody about the plan?
No, I don't.
All righty, thank you. All right, so item D is deliberate in an act on Resolution 2018-04, adoption of City of Raton strategic plan.
We'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-4, adoption of City Strategic Plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2018-04. Is there any further discussion? Do we have a roll call vote, please, Michael Land?
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Segada.
Yes.
Mayor Mance.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Item number E, deliberate an act on the third annual renewal of consulting services agreement between City of Raton and Engineering Analytics Incorporated.
Mayor Pro-Tim, Mayor and Commission, three years ago, we had issued an RFP for on-call engineering services. Those are services that generally we would utilize for infrastructure improvements of a general nature throughout the City of Raton, and the agreement that we had executed with Engineering Analytics Incorporated at the time allowed for an annual renewal of that agreement, and so this would be the third annual renewal of that agreement. Not significant changes in the agreement. It's been a very solid, good partnership with Engineering Analytics Incorporated. Currently, Engineering Analytics is working on projects such as the Hospital Drive Rehabilitation Project, and they're also working on the filter plant project, and I would certainly recommend approval of the third renewal of the consulting services agreement, and upon your concurrence in your approval and your vote on that, I would sign the request for renewal that you have in front of you. So if you could make that part of your motion, if you are so inclined.
Let's see, Karen is here to address city. Karen, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I would like to add, Mayor Commissioners and City Manager Barry, we really do appreciate the opportunity to work with you all here in Raton. It's been a great experience for us. We've worked on a variety of projects. You know, initially, there seemed to be a bit of a backlog of infrastructure projects, and we worked diligently to really further those projects and help the city advance improvements to their infrastructure. So we really appreciate being a part of that team. And just kind of as a little bit of a refresher, you know, we have helped with the construction of the Lake Dorothy spillway overlay, which looks fantastic. We helped with the multimodal, so we did the construction inspections on that project. We worked on the First Street Millen overlay project, the Tiger Drive Millen overlay. We've assisted on projects for not only Raton, but Raton Waterworks, as well as Raton Public Service Company, so we have provided the project management for the Wartzila engine replacement, which I think we should call the new Engine Jenny. But nonetheless, it's been a great experience for us and for me personally. I did want to add that, you know, we do have one person in the Raton office other than myself, Tyler Davis. He's graduate out of CSU, and he moved to Raton, bought a house, is happy living in Raton, and the bulk of the work that we do is out of our Raton office. We do have many geotechnical expertise that are out of our Fort Collins office, and so we do work with them occasionally, but the bulk of the work, we actually do it in Raton, which is great, so.
Yeah.
So thank you. Are there any questions?
Questions for the Commissioners?
I know your work is well done.
Yeah.
Appreciate what you've done.
And you're a great addition to the community. Thank you. I'll move to renew the consulting service agreement between City of Raton and Engineering Analytics and allow Mr. Barry, City Manager, to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to renew the services agreement between the City of Raton and Engineering Analytics Incorporated. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Item F, deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-05, supporting Raton Chamber petition efforts to keep Kmart in Raton. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Pro-Tim, Mayor and Commission, this resolution results from an initiative started with the Raton Chamber, and the President Dee Burks is here with us tonight that asked citizens to do various measures, primarily in the way of signing petitions, to communicate to Sears Holding Company the importance of the Kmart store in Raton. This resolution is intended to endorse the efforts of the Chamber, the citizens that have signed a petition, and generally speaking, we want to acknowledge that that store is extremely important to Raton in a number of ways. It is really one-of-a-kind type of store in not only Raton, but Colfax County, northeastern New Mexico. A lot of us do rely on that for our, you know, general household goods or consumer goods and would have difficulty without that service offered. Kmart is a significant employer in Raton, and it's a way of supporting our local businesses to try to support our small-town vitality, our economic development efforts, and we just want to say that we've done everything that we can really do to make our voice heard, to take whatever efforts that we can. I appreciate all the citizens that have stepped up and got involved in the way of signing petitions or writing letters, and I myself have written a letter as the City Manager that will go out to Sears Holding Corporation, and we have brought this resolution to the commission for your consideration. I would just ask Dee if you have any additional comments with this.
We're well over. First of all, I would really like to thank the commission for supporting this initiative, and I would like to commend Mr. Barry. When the KOAT news crew was here covering the helicopter situation, some quick thinking on his part allowed, he suggested that they do a quick interview with me on the Kmart situation. It ran last night at 10 o'clock on KOAT in Albuquerque. I missed that, but they are sending us a copy of that, so we'll be able to push it out on social media, and as this resolution and letter and all of these signatures are going into Sears Holding, that will be out there on social media. So due to that quick thought, we're getting a little bit of extra exposure, and that's a very good thing as well. As we've told everyone, you know, the slogan, we can each do a little bit, but together we can do a lot. The evidence of the community's support not only will be evident to Sears Holding, but we'll also have this evidence for any other retailer, any other business that is looking at Raton, to show how much the community is behind business. We are very, very business-friendly, and that is a tremendous message, but having that hard data of signatures of people who have stepped up to say, "I am for this," is a wonderful thing, because we wouldn't have had that any other way. So anyway, I would like to commend this commission and Mr. Barry for a wonderful job. We'll be collecting signatures through the end of Wednesday, tallying them on Thursday, and presenting them to the city so the packet can all go in together.
Very good. I did get a couple of text messages from folks I know out of the area, one in Santa Fe and one in Las Vegas, saying they saw it on the news.
Wonderful.
And they hope we get to keep our Kmart.
Well, excellent. Well, hopefully, you know, even getting it out on social media will hopefully even spread it beyond New Mexico, and that's important for us, but I'm glad so many people saw it.
Yeah, one of them said Kmart was very important to them as they travel through on the way up to Denver to visit relatives. They often stop at Kmart, so.
Right, well, and that's one of the things that's being included in this packet that the city is putting together, is the fact that we have so many people who visit via the Wellington Center, we have so many Boy Scouts who come through, the numbers of tourism, all the, you know, the 20,000 people we've seen, the tourist information center is just a small part of all the people, not to mention the people who regionally, whether they're from Angel Fire or Cimarron or wherever, they come and shop at Kmart. So they're really getting a good picture, I think, with this presentation.
Oh, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
So.
I'll move to support Resolution 2018-05, supporting Raton Chamber petition efforts to keep Kmart in Raton.
One second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, support Resolution 2018-05, supporting the Chamber's petition for Kmart. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, deliberate an act on extension of liquor license lease with the Raton Country Club. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Pro-Tim, Mayor and Commission, some years back, if we had an event at the convention center where alcohol service was anticipated, the party responsible might take a measure where they would temporarily use an established private license in town, but with the reduction of those licenses available in town, we've run into some real problems with that, and a lot of events, alcohol service is important. So several years ago, the city did apply for a governmental liquor license. We took proposals as far as a manager to perform that service for whatever event might be held at the convention center. That was aborted by this commission to the Raton Country Club, and it has worked effectively for several years now. So we do have a, an extension of that lease with Raton Country Club and essentially continue the service that we have done now for two years, and I would tell the commission that it has been very effective and it's worked very well. We've got a full slate of events down there where Raton Country Club has done an excellent job of managing that service, and I want to call on the Treasurer to make sure that I'm not leaving any information out since as far as the actions here, but if you have any questions for myself or Michael Land. Michael Land, do you have any comments to add?
Last week, we actually just received the renewal on the city's governmental liquor license, and so this is a formal action that we need to take every year because the Country Club currently is our current leasing, so they have very strict rules and regulations with alcohol and gaming, and we want to continue to comply with those. So once this is in place, we will provide them with another copy just to show that they do have an ongoing agreement with the City of Raton.
And once again, if you would consider the documents attached here and authorize the city manager to execute those documents.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the extension of liquor license lease with the Raton Country Club.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the extension of the liquor license lease with the Raton Country Club. Is there any further discussion? Michael Land, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Segada.
Yes.
Mayor Mance.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item H, deliberate an act on lodgers' tax recommendations. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Pro-Tim, Mayor and Commission, the Lodgers' Tax Advisory Board met on January 17th, and they have included their recommendations to the commission. I will read through these for you. I was only present at the end of the meeting. I was only present at the end of the meeting. Our treasurer was present at the meeting, and I think we can answer questions that you might have. Lodger's Tax Board did recommend to the city commission that $878.39 be authorized to the Raton Chamber of Commerce. This will pay for the attendance at the 2018 Trend NMHA Conference in Santa Fe for the tourism coordinator, and that would be held January 29th and 30th. It would also pay the annual NMHA membership fee. That would come out of the contingency fund. Second recommendation is from the Lodger's Tax Board of the commission, an expense of $215 authorized to the Raton Chamber of Commerce. That's to purchase 500 welcome bags, and we use those throughout the year at various events. We use them at conventions, meetings where tourists who might be people who are coming to town. The board will consider later, I believe, the request for promotional items, and the chamber will work on additional cost information for those items. So we're talking about the $215, which will get you 500 welcome bags. Third recommendation to the commission is that a full-page ad be purchased in the New Mexico Vacation Directory, Print and Digital Package Number Two, and the cost is $2,920. The city will consult with Jared Chatterley and Brenda Ferry for ideas on developing an ad.
If I could, I also talked to the William Halsey with the New Mexico Vacation Directory, and they're able to provide assistance in the creation of the ad as well. So if Jared doesn't mind, I may consult with him and just pull some ideas so that the ad is representative of what we want to advertise in Raton, that we would have their assistance. Thank you.
So we've got Mr. Chatterley on hand. We have the chamber on hand, and our treasurer, if the commission has any questions.
I do want one more clarification. An action for plastic literature bags for the Tourist Information Center as opposed to welcome bags that we hand out at my conferences. This is for the plastic, that people put all their literature in at the visitor center or carry out.
Okay.
I see.
I did see on the quote it was a biodegradable grab bag.
Yeah.
Okay, so not welcome.
Exactly. Sorry for the confusion. Literature bags. We'll make that note.
I'll make a motion to approve Lodger's Tax Recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations from the Lodger's Tax Board. Is there any further discussion? I would just like to make one comment. We have the representatives here that are requesting this, yet we don't have a representative from the Lodger's Tax Board itself. You know, they've been very vocal on some things in the past, and I'd like them to at least give us the decency, the courtesy to show up with these recommendations.
Sure.
I'd like that on record, please. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, deliberate and act on juvenile justice grant fiscal year budget adjustment request number one. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Protim, I am going to defer to Michael Land and to you on the side. The next two items.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is budget adjustment number one for our juvenile justice grant. We are requesting just to make a line item adjustment to move $13,750 from the girls' circle to the boys' council. And the justification for this is because of an increase in referrals that we've gotten. I guess there's a 30% higher rate of referrals coming in for the boys' council than there is the girls' circle program. So in order to ensure that we have enough monies in that particular program to last through the end of the fiscal year, we're requesting this line item adjustment. And we would also request that you, with your approval, authorize the city manager to sign this budget adjustment.
Can you entertain a motion?
I'll move. Excuse me. To approve the budget adjustment.
We have a motion to approve the budget adjustment? Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, is there any further discussion and questions? Okay, Michael Land, could we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Commissioner Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Mance.
Yes.
Thank you. Item J, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-06, Fiscal Year 18, Second Quarter Financial Report. Michael Land, please.
Hey, Derek, Commissioner, in your packet is our financial report for the second quarter ending December 31st. You will see that our ending cash balance in the general fund was $1,863,458. We always allow for our required 112 reserves, your available cash is $1,464,519. The gross receipts received in the month of January, we received that distribution last week. Fortunately, things are still looking good. We're, per budget, what we budgeted this year, we're showing a 5.2% increase per budget. So as I've mentioned in the past, that's a good position to be in, especially now during the winter months. We still won't know until after the legislative session what our small cities assistance will be, but we should have that check, I would say, probably in late March, given that this is a 30-day session. Also, you know, with the recent news of the Kmart closing, we do know that this will have a significant impact resulting in a huge loss to our tax base. So that's something that we're going to be trying to quantify and estimate as we start our budget discussions here coming up in March and April. And so we'll do our best, maybe try to talk with the management at Kmart and possibly get an estimate of what their annual sales are. So that will be somewhat of a challenge for us going into the next budget year. Also, all of our funds are reconciled, and this report will be submitted to the Department of Finance by January 30th. Is there any questions? I did want to mention there is one fund, the Capital Projects Fund. We are showing a deficit balance as of the end of the month. That is on our FAA project. We did run into some delays with the holidays, and the wire transfer from the FAA wasn't received until January 3rd. So in order to expedite those reimbursement requests, we did issue the checks to the vendors, and we helped them in, you know, waiting for receipt of the monies from the FAA. So we did release those checks to the vendor on January 3rd after the funds were received. But we have notified DFA of that, and we'll also put that in our notation in our report. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that we have received the funds from the FAA.
Thank you. So any other questions for Michael Land? Would entertain a motion then to approve the second quarter financial report.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-06, FY 18, Second Quarter Financial Report.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-06, the second quarter financial report for fiscal year 18. Any further discussion? Michael Land, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Mance.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item K, City Manager's Report. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Protim, I did attend the organizational meeting of the Libraries as Launchpad Program. We've talked about that a couple of times tonight. I don't want to do a lot of detail on that. It was good news to me, and the information that was presented was very exciting. I haven't heard of a program like that before, and so I think that that's going to be an excellent program for Raton. We did talk about getting an immediate start on that, and so I think that that can be a change catalyst, and we can identify some creative industries that may fit into our overall plan. I would report to the commission that the city issued a request for proposals for airport engineering. We released that on January 4th. Proposals were received on the 17th. We did receive four proposals. We do have a committee consisting of four staff members. They will complete their review of those proposals by Friday, and we do plan on talking about those and bringing those to the commission, potentially for action on the January 30th special meeting. I traveled to Santa Fe on January 18th. Mayor Protim Sagata, Commissioner Schuster, and Commissioner Chavis were present. We did talk to Representative Roche in the House of Representatives. I also talked to Senator Campos in the Senate. We were able to turn in the capital outlay request that the commission had taken action on previously. We also delivered to them and discussed a technical memo on the Lake Malloya spillway. That's a project that we have worked with, and Dan Campbell had reported to the commission on at past meetings, and it talks about the condition of that primary spillway that's located on the embankment of Malloya. We have followed up with that. We are in the process of scheduling a meeting with the DAN Safety Bureau. That bureau is under the state engineer to talk about the findings of that report and to discuss potential funding through DAN Safety Bureau program, so we'll report back to the commission on that. We did have a number of staff attend management training out of our Public Works Department and our Fire Department, and I would point out that the cost of that was shared by Colfax Workforce Development Center. That management training really fits into the initiatives that Jason had laid out for you as far as some of our objectives in those departments. And then lastly, I would report to the commission that we had submitted our annual report to the U.S. EPA. That's for a stormwater permit that we have at the municipal airport. Has not been a lot of stormwater out there, but we are in on the report timing. That's all I have. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Is there any further questions for Mr. Berry?
No.
Further comments? And we will come to item L, Closed Executive Session for Section 10-15-1H5, Effective Bargaining Between the City of Raton and AFSMI Local 1601. You need a motion to go into closed session.
I will move that we go on to closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Michael Land, would you like to have a roll call vote on this, Brett?
Yes. Commissioner Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sagata.
Yes.
And Mayor Mance.
Yes.
We are in closed session. Thank you.